I'd like to call to order this April the 7th study session of District 116. We apologize for starting a little bit late. Took us a little while to get everybody all hooked up for members of the public. So we'll start out with a roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Exum?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Pulaski?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Hall? Anne's muted.
Oh.
I'm here. President Demmett.
Here. All right. We do have a quorum present. There are no additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda. Citizen statements. I'm actually sitting in the boardroom all by myself and I see nobody.
And we had John, and we had no statements come through to contact us either, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We have no citizen statements for this evening. We do have a call for an exec session after the meeting tonight for the purposes of collective bargaining. And we'll read the full thing when we get ready for that part. Therefore, we need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved second.
Moved in second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We'll begin with administrative reports tonight. And I would like to remind the board and members of the public that when we elected officers a year ago, it was for a one-year term. And that one-year term is up on April the 21st at our next meeting. And so when we meet again, we'll be re-electing officers for another one-year term until the next elections. I do want to say that as planned, and as was discussed a year ago, I will not be a candidate for board president. So, and I, so we just need to make that clear. And so the board members can be thinking about what role they wish to play in the leadership of the board this next year. So we'll wait for further comments until next meeting. We have no policy review tonight. We do have action items this evening, which are personnel items, a series of personnel items. None of which are extremely, none of which require special, special mention this evening. So a motion to approve those personnel items would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall?
Yes.
President Demmett?
Yes. Motion is carried. Because of these weird meetings, we have no study topics for this evening either. And we have no call for a future special or executive meeting. But we do have a superintendent's report, a pretty important one.
Okay, so I'm sharing my screen here with the public. I did just want to make note of, we officially started remote learning this week. So hopefully, any students, parents, community members who are watching, the plan is, I'm showing you kind of the front cover of our plan. It is available at our webpage regarding remote learning, USD116/remotelearning. We have it there in all three languages. The plan, I won't walk through it because it is pretty lengthy, but it talks about our goals, the recommendations of time related to the amount of time that we have students working remotely. We don't have our students on devices for five hours a day, as you know, some people may have thought. So there's a combination of reading activities, independent work activities. Teachers are hosting office hours. They're checking in with students via email. They're, they offered work activities with certain deadlines. So I encourage you to go online, read the plan. We're, we're providing a combination of digital instruction and some paper-based as well. So it is, it is quite a bit to read. There's some sections around how we're communicating with families. And the biggest piece is the learning links. I'm going to show you that really quick here. So this is the USD116 learning link. So our teachers, instructional coaches, administrators have been working on this. When, when you click on the learning link site, there's information around elementary resources, pre-K5, social-emotional learning resources for families. And then when you get to this area of the learning links, you can click on a school. So I'll just go in and click on Dr. Williams, the first elementary school there. And you're able to see all the different teachers and all the different classes. So if you belong to one of these classes and you're a parent, all you need to do is you click on the site. There's information from the teacher. This is one of the language teachers, so everything is in English and in Spanish. They are providing daily uploaded activities. This particular teacher has shown options for if you're using a cellphone or a computer, which is really nice. I didn't know she was doing that. There are tabs at the top where you can choose the day. So today's the 7th. So we can see what, what her message to the students were, was for today. So there, this is one example, but as you go through the learning links, you'll be able to see different examples for all different classes. We also have, and I'll go back to Dr. Williams here. So these first few lines are for classroom teachers. But we also have asked our resource teachers and our specialists to also include information. So as you scroll down, you can see these are the resource special education teachers here. These are the literacy interventionists, the, who work through Title I and provide literacy supports. And then here are some of those related services, like social work, psychologists, student engagement advocates. So everybody basically has a space where they can interact with their students. I know, I think the PE teachers have even been adding activities. So I'll click on this one. So this is kind of the activity for today. And then students can click on these different tabs and see activities related to physical fitness. Fine Arts is here. Fine Arts tabs, just so you can see. And here's Fine Arts. And you just go in through your grade level, look for your teacher. So again, this is a fluid document. It will change all year, for the next few weeks, actually. And every school has come up with their, their way that they're kind of sharing this information with families. So I just wanted to kind of walk everyone through this and show the learning links and show that there are things here for all levels. So we, we have for the middle school, you just look for your teacher, for your team. And then for the high school, same thing, but it's by department. So if you go in by department, you're able to find your teacher and find the activities that they're sharing with their students on a daily or weekly basis. So I would encourage anybody listening, board members, parents, students, to go in, explore the learning links. I know teachers are taking feedback. We've heard some great positive feedback this week already. It's just day two. So we're going to just continue to grow this as we go on. At the top here, there's a tab for families that need language supports too. Okay? So now I'm going to flip over to, let me, oh, Chromebooks. I wanted to give you a little update about Chromebooks. So we've had two tech distribution days. Our first tech distribution day was Friday. And we handed out 565 Chromebooks. Our, our second day was today. We had a beautiful day for it again. And we passed out 435 Chromebooks. So we're under 1,000 Chromebooks in the hands of first through 12th grade students. Thursday, because our kindergarten students don't utilize Chromebooks in the classroom, they use iPads, we're having an iPad distribution day at the elementary schools. So the principals are going to work directly with the kindergarten families. Students will be able to check out their iPad and, and continue to engage using the iPad apps that they're used to using every day on a daily basis in their classrooms. Right now, we have, also have a couple of resources available. So we have two websites, two, not websites, two emails that we're sending to families pretty regularly. So families and community members, if you have questions about remote learning, we have an email, remotelearning@usd116.org. So any remote learning questions can be sent to that email. Kim Norton manages it. And if Kim's not the one who gets back to you, then someone else will, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Learning. And we have a Chromebook Help email for Chromebooks and iPads. So the email is actually chromebookhelp@usd116.org. And someone from our tech team will help, help you with your Chromebook or your device. We're still working through internet access with families. So our first goal was to get, get the devices there. We have been helping families get those set up with usernames. The students should know how to log in. We could, those Chromebooks can be turned into hotspots for people who have smartphones. And then we're also helping parents that reach out to us as we can to get them the internet resources. With every Chromebook that was checked out, they also got a handout that gave them some of those free resources that they can utilize in the community. All right, so next.
I've only, I've only heard one complaint.
Okay.
That's been from secondary about a high school senior that was upset that things started at nine o'clock in the morning. I guess he got in the habit of sleeping until noon.
They have to get up now.
Yeah, that's kind of what I said, is it's just like being in school.
Absolutely.
Get out of bed.
We didn't start at eight o'clock on purpose. We thought we wouldn't, we wouldn't torture them in that way. But nine o'clock is, is a good starting time. As, as we are struggling with other remote learning and not having that in-person, face-to-face instruction, it is also impacting hiring a little bit. As you know, we recently, we have four principal vacancies, one retirement. So we've had principals approved by the board for Urbana Early Childhood, as well as Thomas Payne. But we still had two principal openings. We were set to, right after spring break, we were, we were going to be interviewing for Yankee Ridge. So we had to come up with a different plan for that. So I'm going to turn it over to Angie to share a little bit about what we're doing with that and stop sharing my screen so you guys can. All right, Angie.
All right, everybody. So we decided that we needed to move forward with our interviews for administrators at both Yankee Ridge and then also in a couple weeks at Dr. King Elementary. And so we wanted to be able to set the example in human resources to show our building administrators that we wanted to move forward in the hiring process with our staff this spring too, to get a jump on securing the best and the brightest for our students here in Urbana. And so I was going to talk to you a little bit about the process of what we're doing in our new and hopefully temporary world here. So for Yankee Ridge in particular, I'll tell you a little bit about the process. We're actually in the, in the middle of the process, but we were set to do our screening. And so on, actually on Tuesday, March 23rd, right when we came back from spring break. And so that was pushed back about a week, but we still had our screening almost the same way we had screening like we normally would, but we held it via Zoom. And so we invited every single candidate that had applied to join a Zoom chat with us. And so the candidates were, they, all their materials that they had, we put in a secure folder that the screening committee, which was made up of parents, certified staff, non-certified staff, administrators, were on the screening committee and they had access to look at the candidate's application, their letters of recommendation, their resume, all of their materials, just like they would in the screening committee. And so they had a set amount of time that they could look at the materials. So nothing was emailed out. Just email is not as secure as we want it to be. So they had a kind of a private folder to look at. They can't download it. They can't share it just so that they can view it. And then we came into a screening committee via Zoom where they had three prompts to answer. Prompts such as, you know, talk us through your resume and experiences that you've had that prepare you to be the next, you know, Yankee Ridge principal. And so the candidate was able to just talk us through their resume. Other questions in the screening committee would be, talk to us about various diverse student groups that are similar to the ones that you've worked with in other school districts that would be similar to the diverse student groups in the Urbana School District. And then highlight any accomplishments or achievements that you've had over your professional career. And so really, it wasn't an interview. It simply was a screening process. So the screening committee then had a chance to look at every applicant and had a rubric and a scoring sheet and was able to provide feedback and submit those sheets to me. And we uploaded them in the same format that we would had we done the screening in person. And so now we're moving to the Level One interviews, which will be held via Zoom, actually tomorrow. And so in that process, we are interviewing every candidate that was recommended by the screening committee. In typical administrative processes, we have two screening, or two Level One interview committees. So we're actually going to have two Zooms going on at the same time with 24 different people on the committee. And we are able to do that. Actually, it takes a lot of organization on our end, but we're able to follow the same process that we would be able to do in person, where we have just as much voice from parents, from certified, non-certified staff, and from administrators, so we can still follow the same process, the same feedback forms are still given, the same ranking sheet, all of the same forums are still used. And so while there's a lot of front work, like on the front end, it's the same end result. And so it's not holding us up and we're sending, I sent out example emails to all of our administrators today to show how it can be done and how we don't want this to hold up the process so that we're not losing out on quality candidates this spring. So we don't want to wait until the shelter in place is lifted to be able to hold these interviews. Also, something that's neat is that our recruitment and retention committee is working with our technology committee to go into the schools now that they're vacant and make videos of the schools so that we can provide our candidates with tours of the buildings, since normally that's something we do with these tours too, that we, we have students that normally give the tours of this, of the buildings and, and talk to the candidates. We might even be able to reach out to some parents with some student testimonials and, and merge them together to have like a nice little video where students are talking about the schools. And then also the video of the school so that we have something nice to show to our candidates to make it really specialized about that building. So we're excited about that and we'll be able to have that archived for years to come.
That's great.
Something kind of from our world. So we're, we're moving forward and it's making me tech savvy. I'm not tech savvy and I'm, if I can do it, anybody can do it. So that's what's going on in HR world.
All right. And so the last thing I wanted to mention is we've been getting a lot of emails. Today was supposed to be Kindergarten Connection for all of our incoming K families. So we know you guys are out there and we know you're anxious to get registered. We just need a little more time to come up with what that process is going to look like virtually. So we've been meeting about it. We're coming up with some web-based options for people to preregister for kindergarten and, as well as paper options because we know not everyone will have the ability to print out the forms and go through that online pre-registration process from home. And we know a lot of our people who might go out and use the library or places like that, those places are not open. So we're trying to be really thoughtful around how we can get as many people preregistered in the next couple of weeks. So we haven't forgotten about you incoming K families. We're anxious to hear from you. We're just trying to make the process as, as smooth for you as we possibly can. So be listening and looking for more information to come about kindergarten registration. And that is it for me.
All right, all right. Board report. Any board member have a report this evening?
I just want to say a big shout out to Jennifer and her team. I know these times are very difficult that we're going through, but I think that they've done very well getting the information out there. I also enjoy seeing the Facebook posts from the principals and the teachers at school at our Urbana schools to the students too. So I think her and her team are doing great. Thank you.
Trying hard.
Just wanted to mention that I was able to attend the webinar on COVID-19 that was offered by our legal advisors, Robin Schwartz, last week. I'm sure several people from the district were on there. And, but what it underscored for me was just the sheer complexity of issues facing our district as we make our way through this pandemic. I mean, you know, how to best serve all of our students effectively, how to serve all of our employees, you know, full-time, part-time, subs, contracted employees, you know, how to deal with, manage our construction projects and facility operations, food service, custodial vendors. I mean, the list just went on and on. I mean, to just, in short, our district leaders and educators have a full plate. So I, I know I speak for many when I say we have great appreciation for the hard work and kind of building this as we go. Thank you very much.
Other board reports. I don't want to let the night go by without us recognizing that we had two players end up on the all-area, News Gazette All-Area Basketball Team.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
And won an honorable mention, or one second team. So since one of them has the last name of Tatum, let's turn it over to the Tatum and let her talk.
Oh, yes. So Bryson.
A little bit.
My son, yay. First team all-area and first team all-conference for the News Gazette. And then Jermell Young was also first team all-area. And Jermell's a junior at the high school. And then Christopher Cross, a senior, was second team all-area. So congratulations to all three of those boys. We're really proud of them. Thank you. I was so focused on academic things. I forgot about that.
To have two players out of 10, I believe it was, for the entire News Gazette reading area. Speak, on the first team speaks well of our basketball team this year. So they had a good, great season.
Yes, they did.
All right, other board reports.
Can I just, can I just ask a question I meant to ask before Jennifer finished up her report? But is there, I mean, I've had people ask this and I certainly have wondered it myself. Are there suggestions you have for us, meaning us, the community, us board members, parents, to help? Things that, that people can do to assist the district at this time?
So I think the biggest thing we need now is people to be patient and flexible with us. I think those are the things. Because this remote learning journey is a, is a new learning curve for all of us, the administrators as well as all the teachers. So I think just a little grace and a little patience is, is appreciated. I think everybody has been doing, has, has been feeling that. I, I know right now, this is all new and, you know, and everybody's excited about it. But in three or four weeks, it's going to be really, really old. And the kids are, they're going to be tired of going through and looking at things on computers and, you know, doing all of this independent reading and independent work. So, you know, I, I just, we created those two emails so parents can start reaching out to us. So if they see that their child is getting bored, we're trying very hard. I think initially the plan was just to get as much as we could up to four students and then we'll individualize as we go. So if, if parents feel like their children are getting too much, I think it's important for us to know that. If they feel like they're not getting enough and not being challenged, it's important for us to know that too, so we can continue to individualize this as we go. So I think those would be the biggest things. Right now, we're working through the technology pieces. So I think that part will come. Those, I think those are the big things, Peggy. As, as things come up where we need, you know, people to kind of mobilize and help, we'll definitely reach out.
Okay. And, and just to that, your previous point, if, if parents want to get feedback about resources, you know, in the remote learning packets, do you recommend that they use the email or should they do what they typically do, which is talk to their teacher first, then their principal second, and then the district?
Yes. And almost all the teachers have an email option that they can mail on the, on the learning link sites. They can call. We've been, in all of my letters, I've been saying, call the school. The administrators are still there. Their job is to kind of, you know, feed that information out to teachers. So if parents are more comfortable talking to somebody, they can still call the school, speak to a principal or a, one of the assistant principals, and they'll get that information to the right people. So, yes.
So the emails are really, if, you know, if they feel like they need a broad, they have a broader question or they felt like they, you know, they didn't get, okay.
And, and that's what we've kind of said in some of our messaging. We, we prefer they reach out to the school and the teacher first. If that has not been as helpful, or they feel like their question wasn't answered, then of course, I'm available. Mrs. Norton, Kim is available to kind of jump in and assist. But we prefer they reach out to the building or the teacher first. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good question.
So with those updates, there might be somebody on the, on the list, not necessarily Jennifer. But I know that we were doing a great deal of work on family support, including food. And so are, is that continuing? And are our numbers, the last time you reported to us, you thought the numbers might increase considerably on the amount of meals? Has that been the case?
Yes. And I'll let Carol speak to that while she's pulling, you're pulling up numbers. I'll just say a little shout out while she's doing that. So Friday is spring holiday. Normally, we would be feeding on Friday, but we're, everybody is expecting the holiday break, including all the food service people and the drivers. So we're not going to be serving meals at the drive-ups on Friday, but we will be giving out food Thursday for both days. So families who come through on Thursday will get their Thursday meals as well as their Friday meals. So there's a lot of food prep happening this week. So we've been sending that, that message out via email too. And we'll make sure to get another message out about that on social media so people know. They, they don't need to worry about Friday. We're going to give them two days worth of meals on Thursday. I'll let Carol speak to all the numbers.
Yeah, we're doing about 5,700 meals on Thursday. So normally, it's about 2,500. But on Thursday, we're expecting a larger group to come through just because of the iPad.
So that's 2,500 a day?
Yes. Well, that's, that's 2,500 bags. So there's a breakfast and a lunch in each bag. So they're getting two meals in each bag. So, yeah, we're, the numbers have gone up, especially since we've started to distribute the Chromebooks and things that increase the numbers. And we also, Lynda Gibbons has been working with Stone Creek Church. We have a lot of people that are wanting to come and help. And she's kind of coordinating that with the churches in the area to help deliver grocery bags. So starting, I think, next week, they're going to be delivering close to 500 bags of groceries to.
Wow.
Students. I think they're going to do it. I'm not sure they're doing it all at one place. They're still coordinating. They may do, you know, a couple of schools on one Thursday and then the other schools on the following Thursday, following Friday. But, um, yeah, this week, we're doing backpack groups that have been sending backpacks home with kids during the school year. The Feeding Our Kids group is sending, still reaching out to those same families and sending home bags of groceries for the kids on Fridays. This week, we're doing that on Thursday as well because of the holidays. So lots of good things going on out there.
That's fabulous.
And also, I've been on a call with United Way, CU Schools Foundation, and the YMCA are all wanting to support both Champaign Unit 4 and Urbana schools. So they're helping to coordinate a group of community partners. Our food goes a long way for children 18 and under. However, there are a lot of food insecurity issues because our food is not meant for the adults. So I think these other groups are kind of rallying together to make sure the adults and the whole family is able to have more food in the home through groceries. We've been giving out school supplies since we started remote learning, so there's still a need for more school supplies. And we've been also hearing from some of our families that they need things like toiletries and soap. And so the churches are going to get together with. And so um, the church, churches are gonna get together with United Way, C Schools Foundation, the YMCA, and, and all those groups are gonna coordinate with both districts to see what we need and how we can get that into the hands of more families.
All right. And my last uh, point, uh, I wanna make sure that I'm uh, correctly answering this question. But I believe we, as well as Unit Four, uh, are holding tight on commencement uh, with the idea that hopefully we'll still be able to have commencement. Um, but no decision will be made on that until much closer to the, to the uh, say mid-May or so uh, or, or early May, so that we have an idea. Uh, we wanna have an idea in advance so that if it's possible for families to come and attend commencement in a large group setting, but that uh, we're holding off on that decision as long as we can, uh, with the hopes of being able to do commencement. Yeah, I'm assuming that is correct.
So um, the manager of State Farm Center just reached out to us yesterday, actually, checking in with us. Um, the U of I has um, closed all events at State Farm through, I believe, May eleventh. So he was checking in to make sure that we, as of right now, are still planning to hold graduation. And we responded to him with a yes, as of right now, um, that is still the plan. So um, the university has not said that we cannot use the building yet. Um, and so he wa- he was just checking in to ask what our plans are. So right now, we've responded to him with a yes. As of, as of yesterday, we are still a goal for graduation. And we'll let people know as we can have more discussions about that.
Okay. All right, good. Well, I will, uh, any other comments, questions from board members? With that, um, I will indicate that we do need to go into executive session for the purpose of, and I, I'm sorry, I have to read this. Collective negotiating matter between the district and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some of it.
I heard a motion, uh, I heard a, making a motion, uh, and a second. Uh, and it's with a bit of mental collie, uh, that for, I'll be back next month of court, next meeting, of course, to call us to order. But this is my final time to call us adjourned. Um, so I would like to uh, 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 ask for a vote on uh, adjourning to executive session. There will be no action following the meeting. Uh, is uh, roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Axum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall?
Yes.
And President Demmett?
Yes. Well, we are now adjourned uh, to executive session. Uh, no action following the meeting. Uh, so thank you, everybody, for tuning in uh, and watching us in this uh, unusual uh, manner. Uh, and you can see that board members, as well as our administration, are all uh, trying to make the best out of what is truly a, a, an unfortunate situation. Please, everyone, be safe. Good night.